Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 22, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to special events applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With the exception of the POAC Autism Surf Day and the Skate Party, all of the other events are returning. Are there any questions on any of them?
Any questions?
None for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to items to be presented. We have a presentation regarding 1201 Memorial Drive Redevelopment Plan.
Brett.
Is Planet Disnowmable?
Yes.
Okay. I'd just like to take a moment to make a brief announcement before this presentation. There is a presentation that is going to be made regarding the property located at 1201 Memorial Drive. And on the agenda tonight, there is an ordinance regarding this property and the potential adoption of the redevelopment plan associated with this property. It's ordinance 2024-11. The public hearing and potential adoption of that ordinance has been rescheduled to tonight from prior council meetings. We wanted the public to know that earlier today, the council members received a copy of a report from the firm of Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, which is basically a traffic impact study associated with the property. Because the council just recently, today, received this information, and it will be part of the presentation that will be unfolding momentarily, the council intends to, once again, table the public hearing on the ordinance and the potential adoption of that ordinance tonight until the next council meeting on May 26. But at the conclusion of this presentation, any member of the public who wishes to make a question or have a comment can certainly feel free to do so during the regular open public comment period. And I believe the mayor will be asking the representatives of the developer to remain here to respond to any questions that may come forward. But we just wanted to let you know that there isn't going to be any formal public hearing tonight or any potential adoption of the redevelopment plan ordinance tonight. That is going to be deferred until May the 26th.
June.
June.
June. You're a month behind.
And there are copies of the plan we received today over on the table if anybody wants to go pick one up.
And it'll be on the website tomorrow, right?
Yes. We're intending to put it on the website. With that, we can turn the matter over to the developers for the presentation.
Okay.
You want to go first?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Daniel Condatour. I am the owner of Mode Architects located in Asbury Park, New Jersey. And I've been part of this project since the inception back in 2019. And we spent a lot of time working with our client, Douglas Development, on putting a project together that we feel is fitting for the community based on comments and working with members of the committee and planning board and various other staff members and people in the community. This project has evolved over the years. So I kind of want to go back to where we began. So what we're trying to do, the site itself, you know, located along Memorial Drive, is a great location, we feel, for this type of project in the sense that we feel that the, in our opinion, that the multifamily use is a nice transitional use from where the downtown and the business and Main Street is as it transitions into a single family, instead of more being more of abruptly having a commercial site and then directly adjacent to the commercial be a residential, I mean, the residential single-family homes that exist today. So our goal is to make a building that is, you know, welcomed by the community. And we try to listen to comments and over the years as it morphs. So we started in 2020. And up there on the top left, you can kind of see our initial concept. And this was our first pass. And initially, right away, we knew we were, you know, we were up against a single-family and R1 zone. And our attempt was to, you know, push the building more stronger to the Memorial Drive side. And you can see how a bulk of the massing of the building is pushed up against. And we're taking the full frontage on Memorial Drive. And there's the architecture that's, you know, that was our initial pass, you know. Some of the comments we got back from that was maybe this, where this project is located is more of a commercial zone, not so much on the beach side or the waterfront zone. So that maybe felt a little too light, a little too beachy of a feel. So we went back. We made some modifications. We initially changed the architecture, but we still kind of had that mass. And then over time, we received feedback that it felt too big along Memorial Drive. So our attempt was to knock the building down a story and kind of spread it out, make it lower. And then in the top right, you can see how the building steps. And then eventually, just meeting with, you know, community members and with council people, we understood that, you know, being up against a residential zone, you know, there are setback issues and things like that that they would like to, you know, to look into. Particularly on the residential streets, you have a 25-foot frontage. And at the initial proposal, we were, you know, going zero street setbacks on Fourth and Fifth. So this is just a quick slide to show how the project has evolved over the years to what we believe is a project that has a lot of amenities and attributes that will help the community. Our initial plan did not call for any kind of retail. It was strictly a residential building. But listening to feedback, trying to activate the street along Memorial, we incorporated some small commercial retail spaces. We've introduced, implying the setbacks on Fourth and Fifth, we've implemented a lot of green space into the plan. So there's a nice, it makes that transition, that path from the houses, as you cross, if you're walking to the downtown, a very more buffered scenic pleasant view. We've added balconies to the building. We have, you know, some rooftop amenities for the residents. There's public art that has been introduced over the years. So it's kind of been like a, like a, I'm trying to think of it, like a Play-Doh, right? We've stretched, we pulled, we pushed, we listened, we've incorporated things. And I think now we're at a point where we have a building that we feel really works well with the community. Dan, you go to the next slide. So this is just, you know, I'm not going to go through all this. This is kind of like a quick, you know, timeline of where we started, when we sent the initial concepts, some of our first presentations to city council. We're back in 20 and 20 and throughout the years, we've come back before. We've presented in front of the planning board in 2022. We took comments from those hearings and recommendations and we incorporate them. So throughout the process, and thanks to, you know, a developer like Douglas Development, you know, they listen and they care, and we want to make it right. So they allow us the freedom to do these changes and come back and come back. So, and, you know, and now we're here today where we think, like I said, is a project that works for the community. Another thing I wanted to, you know, touch base on is, you know, as I said, I felt that the use of the mixed-use residential was a good fit as opposed to some of the underlying, the base uses in the B-zone, which is zoned as of right. Some of the things that you can have are takeouts, convenience stores, gyms, laundromats, right, automobile rentals. There's a variety of uses that I really don't feel work well in that area. And then even going into the bulk standards, the bulk standards for the zone on the side, the side yards are five feet and 15 feet and 25 feet. Our lowest side yard to the adjacent residential is 25 feet. So that's our smallest, our smallest one. And then, you know, we matched the impervious and building, impervious coverage. Our building coverage is actually less than 80%. And the setbacks on the frontage on Fourth and Fifth are also allowed to be zero. And max, it says max 10 feet. So we're exceeding the maximum setback on that street. So this is, what you're seeing here is the overall, you know, layout at the parking level. We have 126 dwelling units with a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. We have 20%, we're offering, you know, we're providing 20% affordable housing. We have 132 parking spaces. You can see the setbacks there. We have zero on Memorial, 22 on Fourth and Fifth, and the rear lot line is 25. You can, you also see on the site plan the buffers that I'm talking about. I mean, we're 22 feet to the property line. I'm not, I don't have the exact number to the curb. The curb's another 15 feet. So from the curb, I mean, we're probably about 40 feet from the curb line to the face of the building, which is a nice view shed as you, as you look east. Some of the other things, you know, there's a retail that you can see. We have a kind of balance, two retail spaces on the corner, retail space in the middle. One of the things that we, we have 132 spaces and 126 units. The underlying zone does not require us to, you know, park the affordable housing, but we have parking, you know, for, it's all inclusive, the parking, it's not determined, we're not excluding the affordable housing from the parking. So we feel that the location of the site with the train station, the walkability, the bikeability of this neighborhood and Asbury as in general, that we feel that, you know, we sufficiently, we park the building. You can go to the next one, Dan. So this is kind of where we ended up. The overall building height is five stories. We have a fifth story. The fifth story is set back from the face of the building, approximately 25 feet. So your street view, you don't see those, that fifth, that fifth story. So in actuality, when you're, when you're walking around the building, it appears to you as a four-story, it would be three stories of residential over the parking. We've introduced, you know, I think more consistent materials to this neighborhood being the former, you kind of more light industrial commercial area. So we brought materials in like, such as brick and metal panel and got away from some of the more lighter, like stucco finishes that you see as you go further east towards the beach. We've activated it with the art. There's a nice rhythm, I believe, to the building. It's not just a flat, you know, plain. There's ins and outs and there's nooks. So the overall scale of the building doesn't feel as big as it did, I believe, when we originally started. You can go to another one. So this is just another image looking south, you know, from Fifth, where we have an entrance to the building, highlighting the elevator and the stair shaft, the rhythm, even the brick steps down. So you can see how we try to step the scale appearance of the building down as we, as we go towards the residential section. And you can see the buffer and the greenery. And these areas, you know, they're open, right? They're, they can be, you know, walked on. We could, we could put benches in those areas for people to sit and relax in those green spaces as well as the outdoor seating that we're providing for the commercial spaces as well. So just overall elevation on Memorial Drive, and you can see the rhythm and the bays that we've created. And then here, now that we're elevated and set back, you have a view of that fifth story, which at the street level, you don't, you don't have. So I think that's a really nice feature to help with the scale of the building. Just another view just showing, you know, how we can activate it with the retail spaces and the art. I think we might have one more. That's just more images to show the materials and things. But I mean, like I said, just to kind of summarize, you know, we really took the time to listen to many different people throughout the years. And I believe in the end, we've put together a package and a building that really fits into the community, and it's going to bring a positive impact. It's going to bring, you know, a unique housing availability to this side, to that area of the neighborhood, where there's not too many of that type of resident, multifamily residential options there. And it just kind of, it'll help activate the neighborhood overall, I believe. So that concludes what I had to say.
So, yeah, I just, I don't have a couple of words while I'm here. I'm Paul Milstein with Douglas Development Corporation. There's no perfect scenario in development that I've ever come across in my 36 years with Douglas. I've developed every building within the portfolio, whatever jurisdictions we're in. I've led every single one of those developments. They come with challenges. There's pros and cons. And I think it's a balance, and there's no, this certainly will have an impact on the community. There will be some negative impact because that's inevitable. There'll be some positive impacts because that's a fact. You've got a piece of dirt right now that is barely assessed at any value of money. It'll, this will contribute to the economics of the town. It'll produce income for the town and a tax base. It will bring vibrancy to the neighborhood that's already vibrant, but some additional vibrancy. It will provide a nice opportunity for a substantial amount of affordable housing. That's a relative term, but 20-some units in one spot is a nice pickup. And these units will be identical to all the other units. There'll be no differentiation from those units. So we see this as a modest-priced product that serves a vast amount of people. We think it's a walkable community. You can walk to Main Street. You can walk to the train station. You can walk to the beach. You can cycle. We've done several projects in the last three years with no parking and more units. Everything, you have to look at everything in its context. What's right for that particular spot? And this has come at a lot of effort. We were taller, we were shorter, we were fatter, we were skinnier, much like myself. It's morphed over the years. But you're not going to get the perfect thought, but I think what we've brought is a sustainable project. It's well-designed. It's got nice materials, subjective, I realize that, but we think it's nice materials. I think the bioretentions were a nice touch on Fourth and Fifth Street. They will provide stormwater management. They will help with stormwater management if there's ever overflowing at the intersections. The water will run through those bioretentions and go back into the earth. It provides some green areas, a spattering of retail. It's not a heavy retail project. It was meant to be service-related, neighborhood-related. We don't envision anybody driving miles to come to what we have in this location because they're small boutiquey. More geared towards outside dining. You'll see the tables outside. You'll come in, it's ice cream, it's coffee, it's Danish, it's a bakery. These are small service-type uses, but again, to service the building and the community. I think these are pluses. And I think when you put it all together and you weigh it, this is a well-designed project, but the benefits outweigh the negatives. Of course, I don't live next to it, so it's easy for me to say, but we do this a lot. And I think it'll be a very successful project. So I appreciate your time and effort. And as always, we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is somebody going to walk us through the traffic report since we just got it?
And also, if I could just indicate, the copies of the traffic report are available on the table over here in council chambers if anybody would like to pick up a copy. And a copy will be posted on the city's website tomorrow.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Quinn, council members. My name is Gary Dean. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and a licensed professional planner. My specialty is principally in the area of traffic engineering. And in that capacity, I had the honor to represent the city in the review of the breakwater application a few blocks to the south on Memorial. My firm is Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, and we have an office in Somerville, New Jersey, and right next door in Ocean Grove. I was also part of the VFW application by this applicant that was heard by the planning board and approved some months ago. Our task-
Did you say you're our attorney for breakwater? Did I hear that?
Traffic engineer.
Traffic engineer.
As part of this task and as was indicated, we prepared a summary of both, I'll say, zoning and traffic volume issues as well as an assessment of access to the site. I suspect the council members are familiar with the environs. The public may not be, but it was a former industrial building that had multiple stories, two and three stories, truck docks that faced each of the streets, and has served by, my count, at least nine driveways. Those nine driveways all represent potential conflict points for anyone using the sidewalk, pedestrians, bicyclists, and the like. And this particular application represents one step in a positive direction to consolidate and bring some order to that former chaos. As you've heard mentioned, the subject property lies in the B zoning district. And absent the redevelopment, which is a planning technique that gives the community the ability to consider better zoning alternatives, the underlying zoning permits a host of traditional commercial, I'll call it, dare I say, highway-oriented land uses, things such as strip malls and stores and shops, and takeout, sit-down restaurants, convenience stores, gymnasiums, laundromats. It's a fairly extensive and broad list. The reason that's important is that the alternative you're being asked to consider is, is there a better zoning alternative that promotes a high aesthetic quality of a development and, from my perspective, represents a very unique opportunity to reduce traffic impacts? And I understand traffic is always a very sensitive issue. Anything that can be done to suppress or reduce those impacts, I would submit, is generally well-regarded. I apologize for the lateness of the report. We were, I'll say, asked to prepare this, and the detail I felt was important warranted a little more than a one- or two-page narrative. One of the more important elements to which I'd like to draw your attention relates to the comparison. You have a B-zone, and that permits certain uses. What I have done is looked at your zoning criteria. What could fit on this property if it were not developed for what you see before you? And things such as an office building, not that anyone's building office, but it could be developed on the site, and your zone plan certainly allows it. It can't be the size of the lot. We wouldn't be able to fit the parking. So we actually took it a step further to say what could fit and what would have enough parking in accordance with your zoning ordinance. And I won't go through all of these. They're in the report, and I know you need time to digest it. But I can say, without question, and traffic engineers always look at peak hours, that is, when is traffic busiest? When are people usually commuting or on the weekends? When are they out doing what they do? For every single peak hour, the proposal you have before you for up to 130 principally one and studio bedroom apartments with street-level commercial would generate less traffic, less traffic than, I would say, a buy right or permitted use in your underlying B-zone. Now, we take that a step further, and traffic engineers, we go to empirical data, data that's been collected at other buildings, other sites. This is in a unique location in the city. And as a local resident, I understand, particularly on the weekends, I don't want to drive a car. And in fact, I avoid using my car. It's difficult to park. It's a challenge to get around. So what do we do? We walk, we ride bikes. I would expect, given the nature of the environment, that is by and large what many of the residents will do, not so much to go to work, but on the weekends when we do see an influx in visitor activity. And even considering that Saturday peak hour, of course, an office would be closed. I'll concede that. But for virtually all of the other uses, even the Saturday peak hour, the proposed redevelopment, as I said initially, affords the city with a very unique opportunity to develop a land use that has positive attributes to the community but keeps the traffic impacts, as I'll say, low as practicable. The next element of our, this initial evaluation and as throughout the process, should this get to a planning board application, very detailed engineering studies would be done. But we were tasked to say, the site has nine driveways. Where would the best point of ingress and egress be for traffic? Now, the site doesn't warrant nine driveways the way an industrial site did. So the first thing that happens with this particular development is you get rid of truck traffic. There was truck traffic coming in and out of this property. There were loading docks directly on Memorial that required trucks to back up on the street and into the building. There were loading docks on Fourth that had the same issue. All of that goes away. We know the site's vacant. With a residential use, that activity goes away. With commercial use, as is anticipated in the B-zone, you would still have truck traffic. We looked at the pros and cons of each particular roadway segment, Fifth, Fourth, and Memorial, as to where would be the best location for a site driveway. The public may not be aware, but your consultant, T&amp;M Associates, has prepared a streetscape improvement for Memorial Drive, and that includes restriping, the introduction of parallel parking, and most importantly, a study was done and demonstrated that a traffic signal is warranted for safety due to a fairly significant crash history at Fourth and Memorial. And as a result, and it is my understanding from your engineer, that traffic signal will be installed this year. That presents a measure of safety and, I'll say, coordinated traffic operation at Fourth and Memorial. One of the things we first looked at is, how about Memorial? What do we have to say about Memorial? We've done traffic counts. Traffic counts were done for breakwater. Traffic counts were done for the signal warrant study, and our office just did new traffic counts. Memorial Drive carries the highest volume of traffic of any of the roads surrounding the site. The second busiest road is Fourth. And then the third busiest road, and again, I'm reflecting on peak hour traffic volumes, but it stands to reason it would be similar on a daily basis, is Fifth. Normally speaking, in design, we put the driveways for land use where there's the least amount of traffic. And the reason for that is it makes it easier to get in and out of the site. You wouldn't put a driveway on a busy state highway when you have access to a corner side street that carries less activity. In this instance, however, we did consider the merits of putting a driveway on Memorial, keeping one of those access points. And the challenge we have, it is a less safe alternative simply because there's more traffic on Memorial, there's additional pedestrian activity that will be generated on Memorial. And in my opinion, with the paramount concern being an eye towards safety, is that is the least desirable location for a driveway to the site. It would represent the most difficult, we'll say, challenges for traffic to get not only in by making a left turn or right turn, but out onto Memorial. So then we go to the other end of the spectrum, and I say, well, what if the driveway were on Fifth? There are driveways there directly opposite, opposite us is the Sunset Point Shopping Center. Not a bad location to consider a driveway. The concern I have with that is that any resident in an automobile that wants to go on Memorial or come further into Main Street or go to the waterfront would have to come out to Fifth, turn right, and wait at the stop sign. Not that much different than Memorial. That traffic would wait for a break in traffic on Memorial to turn left, right, or go straight. I raise a slight element of concern in that the angled parking in front of Sunset Point is proposed to be retained under the streetscape plan. It's ideal. It adds capacity and on-street parking, but it affects the sightline looking to the north. And so now I say, well, what about Fourth as a point of access? And where this study has rested is when you consider each of those alternatives, having the site access come out on a Fourth, and the only thing opposite the site on Fourth is the Board of Education offices. It would allow site traffic to look left and right with virtually no sightline obstructions. And then if it does want to proceed north on Memorial or go across to Points East, that will be regulated by this new signal. So as I look at the balance of what is the safest alternative, and I understand, no one likes more traffic on any street, and I am mindful of that. I try to balance it with, if there is going to be more traffic, and as this is a vacant lot, it's going to be developed. Where is the best alternative to provide the highest element of safety? And in my opinion, reviewing crash data from your consultant, looking at the operation of the signal, we were provided the plans for that operation, and looking at your streetscape, in my opinion, it accomplishes the safest means, but it also preserves what you're about to invest in the streetscape project by putting more parallel parking on Memorial Drive. There is one element that I cited in the report for consideration by the council. Would you mind going to- Would you mind going to the concept plan, the grade-level plan? And what I'll present is a concept layout as to how that building fits on the property. And as was described, you will see that the building is set back a considerable distance to both the north and the south from Fourth and Fifth. My thought was, in that additional on-street parking will be gained by closing all of the driveways, is that similar to what you have in front of Sunset Point? You will see the sidewalk on Fifth Avenue could easily be pushed closer to the property line, and that would allow the city, if you thought it had merits, to gain additional angled parking on Fifth. Not that the property needs it, but it benefits the residents, it may help a few patrons to Sunset Point, but the physical space is there to put it, and it doesn't affect the bike lane. So the sidewalk just comes closer to the site, there's a little less green, the curb would come closer to the site, but angled parking fits. You could also do it on Fourth, but I think that, to me, is a little less desirable, only because, A, we would have a site driveway, and it does, the site driveway itself eliminates, would eliminate more parking, but I also like to keep the sight lines as visible as possible. So it would net about seven to eight additional on-street angle parking spaces on Fifth. It is not a recommendation for this project. You could do it tomorrow if you so chose. You just have a potential developer who would, in working with your engineers and planners, and if the council is so inclined, we could implement that, and you get a few extra spaces. And beyond that, I appreciate the time to hear this, not having the benefit of a full review. But that is essentially where we started, and at the end of the report, page eight, we've listed a few bullet points that really encapsulate what I just described, but again, to highlight, access to Fourth, in my opinion, looking at the traffic is the most efficient and safest access option, largely to take advantage and to capitalize on the traffic signal that you're about to install. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No, okay. You'll be in the public portion.
It's his first time in council meeting.
Thank you. We're going to ask you to please stick around, because during the public portion, there would be, I'm sure, many questions for you.
Thank you. We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bozine.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chat.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Nothing, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yeah, I just want to send the council's condolences to Anita Weiner. Robert and Anita are longtime residents in our downtown, and Robert passed away last weekend. He was a regular volunteer on our committees, helped tremendously during the pandemic in helping local businesses develop grants. So we send our heartfelt condolences to them.
Thank you. Mayor Moore?
Yes. Beginning of June, the 200 Club of Monmouth County always has a 57 annual Vower Awards luncheon, and as usual, many of our fine police officers were recognized. I'm just going to quickly read them out. Commendation awards went to the Asbury Park Police Department, Detective Captain John Cresio, Detective James Crawford, Detective Aaron Shaw, Detective Steve Cavendish, Detective Anthony Houlis, and Officer Parisi. And then merit awards went to Officer William Whitley, Officer Gregory Parisi, Officer Jonathan Doria, and Officer Stephen Love, and Officer Sean McGrady, and another award somewhere, I skipped by. Commendation award went to Officer Anthony Farantino, and Officer Michael Treadway. And the 200 Club is a great organization that does honor all the police firefighters throughout the county for valor and merit, and Asbury Park usually has quite a few people get awards, so I congratulate them all, and just wanted to let the public know about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members, I'd like to introduce you to John Hayes this evening. You have before you a resolution to consider and adopt or an agreement of employment for John Hayes for a deputy city manager here in Asbury Park. John Hayes has been in public service for over 30 years, serving municipalities and the state of New Jersey. John, who has lived and worked in Asbury Park for nearly 20 years, retired as a captain and executive officer from the New Jersey State Police, where he led a staff of over 200 employees. John created the Diversity and Inclusion Unit within the New Jersey State Police to highlight the importance of diversity for all 5,000 enlisted and civilian employees of the Division of State Police. John is a statewide cultural diversity instructor, co-chair of New Jersey LGBTQ+ Law Enforcement Liaison Program, and has a passion for public service and outreach. John holds a master's degree in administration from Fairleigh Dickinson University, and lives in Asbury Park with his amazing husband, Cliff, of 19 years. John?
I'm glad to be here. I'm very fortunate to have lived here and worked here for almost 20 years, and I'm very excited. Thank you, council, and thank you, City Manager, for the opportunity to work in this great city, and I look forward to getting the work approved in just a short couple of weeks. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Matters from the City Attorney?
Nothing at this time, other than to welcome John.
Thank you. We're now on to public participation. I have motioned open the meeting to the public.
Move to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. You're going to state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, state your name and address for the record, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Thank you.
I can go.
Yes.
All right. Hi, everyone, my name is Rhiannon. I live on Sixth Avenue, and I travel Memorial and make a right onto Fourth Ave every day for work, you know, about 7:40 in the morning, and then in reverse, about 5:30 at night. So, you know, a lot of people on Fourth Ave in that section, it looks like they don't have driveways to park their cars for their own houses, and with 126 apartment units, figure two people in each unit, you know, the 130-something might not be enough, and I'm wondering if those residences on Fourth and Fifth Avenue that don't have driveways in any regard, are they going to get special parking permits to park in front of their own house, because now they're going to be in competition for parking space? That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Eric Gallopo, 908 Fifth Avenue. So I live right next to the site, as many of you know, and I will say that, over the years, Paul and Mr. Condator have been very responsive to hearing us out. And I think that while I agree with you that we have always been yes-in-my-backyard about this project, they have been responsive, and we have gotten to a much better place on where the building mass materials and siding are. However, I think the imagination of this project has stopped at the property line. The results of the traffic study, which unfortunately, we are expected to absorb and respond to in minutes, and for only three minutes, isn't really thinking about all of the things that could be done to make entrance safe on Memorial Drive. There are curb cuts all the way up and down Memorial Drive, and unfortunately, accepting all of the decisions that have already been made, to justify the decisions that have been made, doesn't leave us in a place where we can imagine the possibility where this site, with all of the impacts that it has, could work for all of us. Many people here say yes to this. We want these residents, we want this building, we want this here. But what we want is that the site, and the streets, and the sidewalks, and the areas around it are as thoughtfully conceived as the rest of the project. That means that we may have to change where curb cuts might be, we might have to look at different arrangements of parking, we might have to look at the short-sighted plan for Memorial Drive, which separates the bike lane and puts them on opposite ends. Currently, you will have parallel parking on the east side of Memorial Drive, up near to the tracks. Somebody will park in that spot, and what they will do is walk directly across two lanes of moving traffic, another bike lane, and a grass patch before they hit a sidewalk. That's not safe. Comparing what was on that site for 30 years, and has been vacant for 30 years, to the possibility of what can happen is not a fair comparison either. There is no building there. It's a blank site. It's 300 feet long by 200 feet wide, that is the size of a football field. We have enough creativity, enough ability, enough desire of people to live here to do something better, so that we, who will live next to the site for the rest of our lives, and those who are going to be impacted by not being able to find parking, it's not truly a single-family neighborhood. In fact, the single-family home is the exception and not the rule. And so there is a way to take the results of this study and to think about a better future that includes a redesign of the site and the area around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rob Giannetta, I live at 1117 Fifth Avenue, and my question is, for the gentleman that did the traffic study, and I agree with everything Eric just said, but have we looked into a right turn only coming out to Memorial Drive? That's really a quick question. Was that considered? It seems to me that the traffic coming from, that there's not a lot of traffic coming from the north going south, would that...
What I suggest, and hold the clock for a second, don't take your time. If you're going to have more questions, why don't you ask all your questions now, so when he answers, you say, well, I got more questions.
So if you have more... That's the only question I really have. That gives us another option for egress coming out of the building and traffic. So would we consider a right turn only coming out onto Memorial?
Yes.
We did consider that, and the alternative is, with right turn only, where does that traffic go? It goes to Fourth, and then turns left or right, but for the people that want to go north, they then turn right, go down Fourth, and cut through the neighborhood. We didn't think that that would be particularly well-received with simply having the driveway on Fourth. Sure, if someone wants to go to the west and turn right, they can, but for the bulk of the traffic that wants to get on Memorial or come into town, we don't run them through the neighborhood. So we did consider it, and for that reason, felt it would be dis...
Is there anything we could do on Memorial that would split up the egress onto Memorial, Fourth, and Fifth? By moving the traffic lines on Memorial?
I don't understand.
If we move the traffic lines on Memorial, is there any way that we could get egress out onto Memorial?
The site has a driveway on Memorial, we know that. The concern is, there's no light there. And once the light goes in, there will be a line of traffic on Memorial, as there is today with the stop sign. It will be longer, because that's how traffic lights work. So we did consider that, but that still means someone leaving the site is dependent on finding a break in traffic on Memorial, which is a little more concentrated with the light, and again, that's why I felt it was less safe. I do need to correct something that was misunderstood by the prior speaker. The on-street parking on Memorial is on the site side, it's not on the east side by the tracks.
It's on both sides.
It's not. I've reviewed the plans, it is only on the west side, there is no parking on the east.
Plans provided to me by the transportation manager.
Okay, 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 thank you, Eric.
Parking on both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Harrison Dillard, I live in Califon, New Jersey, but I'm here representing the NAACP. I'm president of the NAACP in Hundredan County. I'm also a 27-year law enforcement veteran, and I'm here to speak on behalf and advocate for Lieutenant Camille Warwick. This is my third time being in this room. The first time was when he was promoted to sergeant, second time was when he was promoted to lieutenant, and now I'm here, also here to support him for what he's dealing with, with the retaliation that he's experienced from your police department, Mr. Mayor. I spent time running Internal Affairs, I retired as a captain in Morris County, New Jersey, now I'm chief of police at a college in New Jersey. I'm well-versed in how Internal Affairs works, and this all started in 2016, when he, when I say he, Lieutenant Camille Warwick, reported some misconduct by your police department at the highest levels, including internal affairs violations, which ultimately resulted in him being retaliated against. Then he went to the state, excuse me, then he went to the county, the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office, reported the same misconduct, it came back to Asbury to investigate again, and it resulted in more retaliation. Then he went to the state, to the Attorney General's Office, reported it there, it was sent back to Monmouth County, and ultimately back to this board, and resulted in additional retaliation against him. He was out for a couple of years, suspended with pay, based on the retaliation of him reporting misconduct by your police department. Ultimately, was made whole, got his job back, got his rank back, and now he's suspended without pay in another form of retaliation. He reported racial bias, racial discrimination, racial comments, that he's experienced and others have experienced by members of your police department, Mr. Mayor. And ultimately, we're here, there's plenty, several law enforcement officers in the state who are well-versed in how Internal Affairs works, how whistleblowers laws to protect law enforcement officers work, and he is currently suspended again, this time without pay, in an effort to get him to settle and move on and leave this police department, which is something that he's very passionate about. He's been on the forefront of leading change in increasing diversity in the state. He and I have written laws to try to increase diversity in the state. We are proud law enforcement officers, but we are going to speak truth to power, and we are going to address these inequities that we're seeing, and how whistleblowers who report misconduct at the highest levels of their administration, how ultimately, they're the only ones that are punished for their actions. They are retaliated against, and I'm here to ask the community members in this audience to challenge what's happening currently. Retaliation by this administration, by this police department, by the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office, and it won't be stood for, and as the president of a branch of the NAACP, we are going to make sure that this is dealt with and heard at the highest levels. Thank you.
Can I ask you, please, not to start the clock, I asked to make one statement before I give you my official statement. I just want to thank the council and the mayor for recognizing the good officers of Asbury Park during your report. I thank you for that. My name is Robert Grease, I'm the executive vice president of the state FOP, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend and colleague, Camille Warwick. I have known Camille for quite some time now, and have found him to be one of the most honorable and honest persons to come across during my time in law enforcement. One might say, he is too honest, honest to a fault, and he calls it like he sees it, and that's what the problem is here. To charge someone and discipline someone to the level of taking away their livelihood is wrong, it's vindictive, and especially in this matter, retaliatory. Lieutenant Warwick merely did his job, reporting a racially motivated incident to his department, and rather than his department to correct that problem, the powers that be saw fit to charge and suspend Lieutenant Warwick. Camille, if he didn't, I have a question, what if Camille didn't report this incident to those that complained to him and reported this incident to him? What would happen to him? Would they report him for non-action? Of course they would. Wouldn't he be in dereliction of his duties of a ranking officer by doing that? The clear answer in this case is yes. And here's another question. The plaque that we're talking about that is in question. If it wasn't racially motivated to be put there, why was it removed? Lastly, in closing, to charge and suspend anyone without a lauter mill hearing is a violation of that person's due process and civil rights, and that's what we have here in Asbury Park today. I'm asking this council, I'm imploring this council to look into this matter, I'm imploring to the residents of Asbury Park to stand behind Lieutenant Warwick for this great I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, governing body. My name is Lawrence Sufferin. I'm from Englewood. I am a member of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. I'm also a retired police chief, and I'm here to also speak on behalf of Lieutenant Camille Warwick. Lieutenant Warwick has had exemplary integrity over the years that I've known him, has worked very hard, not only in this community, but as you heard with others, in order to write laws and work with legislators in order to make sure that diversity and inclusion was carried out throughout the state, which in this day and age is very important, making sure that we have proper representation of our minorities and other peoples, people of color in various positions. And I think as a previous internal affairs officer, I think it's a miscarriage of justice for anybody who we go out and encourage to report wrongdoing when they see something, hear see something, and to be penalized and charged for it. And I think that the administration has a duty to make sure that both the police administration and the county administration are administering justice as it should be. It should be fair and equitable. It should not be just on a case-by-case basis, no matter what the individual has, whether it's a pending lawsuit, whether it's a pending grievance, they have the right to come to work, to work fairly and impartially without being harassed, retaliated upon, and of course, come to work and work with his or her peers. And I think that Lieutenant Warwick has, through the years, shown his due diligence in coming and providing service to the community, and I think at this time, the police administration is doing a complete disservice by hindering him, suspending him without pay, and he was previously suspended with pay, and it seems like it's just more of a penalty that he is being charged with for reporting what we always ask our people to do, is if we see something wrong, say something. And in this case, he said something. And at this particular juncture, he's being penalized for saying something. And I would implore the governing body and the residents of this town to make sure that if we're going to administer justice, it's done fairly and impartially, and to review the incident as best as possible, and to make sure that justice is swiftly done. He's entitled to due process, proper due process, and I encourage everybody to make sure that not only Lieutenant Warwick, but the entire department and employees get due process. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Seuss. I'm the director of the New Jersey chapter of the Council for Social Justice. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Lieutenant Warwick. The, from what we understand, the case against Lieutenant Warwick is a clear case of retaliation against a whistleblower. This is in no way should be tolerated, as whistleblowers are protected by law. The disciplinary action against Lieutenant Warwick is clearly intended to make an example of him and to intimidate anyone who is contemplating coming forward with a complaint of discrimination. The net effect of this intimidation is that discriminatory behavior will continue to be tolerated within the APPD with impunity, further inflicting harm on the minority communities within its jurisdiction. The Asbury Park Police Department is a law enforcement agency with a history of claims of discrimination against it. Over the last decade, lawsuits that include racial discrimination have cost the taxpayers close to $2 million. The facts point to a systemic problem that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Felicia Simmons. I'm standing in the space of president of Monmouth Ocean County National Action Network and standing here very emotional. I can say I'm here for Warwick, but I'm really here for a community that has been harassed, intimidated, and pushed for decades on top of decades. When we talk about black people are 6% of the population of Monmouth County, we present 80% of the prison system. That is statistically impossible, right? Statistically impossible. That leads to overpolicing and intimidation and otherwise other kinds of harassment. In the last decade or so, the population, the black population, has decreased by almost 39%. That is like a tsunami came up and almost swept away half of the population. Why has it decreased? It has decreased because of perfect storm of poor housing, of overpolicing, of poor education, of overall lack of concern for the minorities of this community. I sat back and read the report that came out the other week by the prosecutor, saying that there is no racism in Asbury Park Police, but I'm a lifer here, so I remember crabs, cops against the rise of blacks. So I remember these things. I remember these stories. I've felt this intimidation, and I look to you, council, because it is your responsibility. I know it is hard. I know there's a lot of pressure. I've heard the stories and seen the movement, but it's on to you to protect every resident of this community. We sit back and say, "Nobody is safe until everybody is safe." When they talk about the use of force, that most people might not understand, it came out a report a few years ago that said you're almost 200 times more likely to be assaulted and black here in this community, in Asbury Park, 1.3 square miles. This is something that needs to be addressed. We are looking for a whole community. I'm not a person against law enforcement. I actually have, I care about a lot of law enforcement. I love and respect the protect and serve. We need to be in Asbury Park, a community that shifts away from warrior protection to protect and serve. And here, we can make those changes in this community. This community is looking for these changes, and that's it. Be blessed.
Good evening. My name is Lisette Anderson. I am the president for the Hispanic American Law Enforcement Association statewide. I stand before you today, before then. I'm actually a law enforcement, I've been on the job for 24 years. I stand before you today with a heavy heart as we gather to support a man of great integrity, honesty, and dedication, our beloved Lieutenant Camille Warwick. In times of adversity, true character shines through, and it is in these moments that our support and loyalty are needed the most. As many of you may already know, Lieutenant Camille Warwick has been suspended without pay due to allegations that lack the substantial evidence required for such a severe action. In our society, the principle of innocent until proven guilty is a cornerstone of justice, facing unjust succ- some, I'm sorry, some sequences. Throughout his career, Lieutenant Camille Warwick has proven himself to be a pillar of our community, a beacon of hope, and a tireless public servant. His dedication to his duty, his work ethic, and his commitment to upholding the values of honesty and integrity are qualities that we all admire and respect. I have had privilege of knowing Lieutenant Camille Warwick personally, and I can attest to his character without a shadow of a doubt. He is a man of honor, a man of principles, and a man who has always put the needs of others above his own. Today, we stand united in our support for Lieutenant Camille Warwick. We stand together to demand a fair and justice investigation, to ensure that the truth prevails and to see that a good man is not unjustified punished. I urge each and every one of you to remember the values that we hold dear: fairness, justice, and compassion. Let us not rush to judgment, but instead let us stand by our friend and colleague in this, in his time of need. Lieutenant Camille Warwick, know that you are not alone. We are here for you. We believe in you, and we will stand by you until justice is served. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Polly Shulga, 1100 Fifth Avenue. On the heels of all of the testimony that we just heard, I almost hesitate to go back talking about bike lanes and driving and parking, because this is so impactful and so important. We're talking about equity, we're talking about safety, we're talking about fairness, and kind of wrapping into that, I do need to go back to our, the beginning of what we started talking about with regard to the development of 1201. But just briefly, Mr. Engineer, I don't remember your name, but you mentioned that we have the wrong plans for the way parking is established, and James are over there. The plan that you, I guess, is on the city website that you gave to us, which Eric was referring to, does show parking on that side of the street, to my understanding. Are you saying no?
Correct.
I know you are, but I...
It is on the west side. I have the plan.
I'm just checking.
I can put it on the screen.
I saw yours.
It's provided by the city's consultant, so I feel confident in my representation.
I am confident in yours, too. I just wanted to make sure that we have the correct plan and that the plan on the city website is the same as what you're talking about.
I can't answer that question.
James, can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, I just opened the plans on the website and showed the parking on the west side, not the east.
So there's none?
And James, it will not allow us to put parking on the east side of Memorial Drive.
Good to know. Okay, so we are, we stand corrected. I just wanted to clarify that. And then with regard to movement in and out of the building, I made a statement at the last city council meeting, and we're still, those of us who are here, probably most of us, would still like to see the entrance and egress on Memorial with regard to the setback, with regard to parking, possibly diagonal head-in parking along that side, that part of Memorial could work. You know, we go back and forth and back and forth, finding the safest, most logical way for people to get in and out of the building, whether it's right turn only, whether, you know, and I, Paul, thank you, I know you're really on this, you've got it, you really understand what we're looking at. I don't claim to be an engineer, I'm not a city planner, but it seems to me that entrance and egress on Memorial could act as a traffic calming measure. People coming out, whether they're only allowed to turn right, like out of the car wash, could work. I understand that you're saying it would probably be a bad idea to direct traffic through the neighborhood. That makes sense, too. But I want to, I want to just jump to one other aspect of this, of this planning. I would love to see a two-way bicycle track on the side of the train tracks rather than any bicycle facility on the parking side of the street. It just seems to me that would be a whole lot safer to do that. And then, secondly, we were walking on Memorial the other night, and it looks like there's a ton of grass along the curb, almost equals or more than the width of the sidewalk. So I don't know whether that's gonna be changed, but it looks like that sidewalk is brand-new. Can anybody clarify that? Paul, do you know?
The sidewalk on the Memorial Drive is fine?
Right in front of the develop, the property, 1201?
Yes, so the whole sidewalk and curbing, as well as the road and sewers, were all redeveloped, restructured as part of the Memorial Drive restructuring plan. As part of this development, I'm sure that's how it'll change, but yes, all that is brand-new.
Okay, so per my email to you, and all you guys were in the email, too, my question was whether that's permanent and whether that amount of grass where people are parked there are gonna have to walk across all that grass to get to the sidewalk? There's no way to access the sidewalk unless you literally, if it's rainy or muddy or snowy, you're gonna be walking across grass, not to mention grass being a resource suck and maintenance, you know, cutting it, watering it, so...
Okay, James?
Just talking about, if we can talk about that another time, I don't want to take more than my time, but if we can discuss possibly widening the sidewalk and maybe get rid of the grass altogether.
Put it against the door.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Sabino, 1000 Fourth Avenue. I've come before the council before to talk about the traffic on Fourth Avenue currently, and I have been speaking to an officer, Reng, who is head of the Traffic Safety Unit, and we were talking today about what he's been doing and how the traffic has been slowed by means of having police officers on Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Deal Lake. And he said that they have been giving out tickets and that tickets unfortunately are not a great source of income because most of them go to the state. However, he said that they have been giving out tickets, which was good to know, and I said maybe there'd be a way to publicize that so that the people, residents, know that the traffic is being slowed or tickets are being given, because we have no way of knowing that. So if there's, if you don't see a cop sitting on the street, you don't know what they're doing, actually. So as we were talking, there was a cop sitting across the street from my house, and traffic slowed, surprisingly, as soon as they saw the cop standing across the street in his, the traffic unit cop in cop car number 10. And everybody slowed down. As soon as that cop car moved, traffic picked up again, and that officer, Reng, said was the problem, is that they have one unit that does traffic, it's trying to stay on Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Deal Lake, and trying to answer all the calls. So obviously shorthanded when it comes to traffic. But he seemed to think that that was basically a problem everywhere, that people just don't slow down, that there is no way of giving enough tickets to make that happen. Now you put 130 more cars on Fourth Avenue going back and forth every day, leaving town, coming back into town. It doesn't matter whether they live on Fourth or not, they're gonna speed because Fourth is a speedway. So in terms of density, which we haven't spoke about today, I'd like to ask if there's any way of lessening the density in this unit to come down from 126 units that you have there, which is far more than the neighborhood really can tolerate? And if there was a way to make it profitable for you and still give us low-income housing and come down from 126 units? Because that would help with all of these problems immensely. So whatever it is that makes it profitable, I think deserves another looksee, because at that density, we're far more dense than anything in the neighborhood, and it's gonna wreak havoc on all the things we're talking about. So I hope that that's looked at again, especially when you're looking at the traffic study, to keep in mind that that's 126 cars.
Tom, hold on one second. Nancy, I commend you because you got answers that I've been asking for months that I can't get from the police department, because we get a police report that will say, I'm making up numbers, 650 stops. And I'm like, well, how many warnings and how many tickets? Oh, we can't tell you that. So at least you got an answer, I can't get a response. So I'll make you mayor for the day. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Pavinski, 1607 Emery Street. I'm the chair of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission in town, the commission responsible for creating the garden outside the city hall here that gives over 2,000 pounds of vegetables every year, every season during the summer, free of charge to anybody who needs it, anybody who wants it. No one is turned away. Also responsible for 26, 27 gardens now throughout town that have been developed by the volunteers, totally free, totally welcoming people who want to see the city grow and become beautiful and become more welcoming. My concern this evening is that the gardens in particular on Wesley Lake are standing still at the moment because somewhere along the line, there has been a contract approved for irrigation. Apparently whoever put the lights on, put new lights there, destroyed the old irrigation, and now we're hand-watering nearly 12 gardens on that street. That's pretty impossible. We have a 350-gallon water truck, but you could do about four gardens, and then we also have 19 new trees that we just planted on Grand Avenue. Where is that irrigation project? When is it starting? Why hasn't it started? I've already asked several people, and I get the answer almost verbatim, verbatim, excuse me, well, they'll get to it as soon as they can. I don't know what that means. I need to ask you to find out what that means. When is that gonna happen? And before you answer, if you are gonna give me an answer, we had someone talking about getting rid of the grass. No, 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 no. If you look at that picture of that building that they're planning on creating, where are the trees? There are no trees there. Everything is right up against the street, and there are gonna be no trees. How do you build something like that without any trees? City has to have trees. It creates life for everybody. It creates safety for everybody. It creates welcoming for everybody, and we're gonna have sidewalks? That doesn't make any sense to me. Mayor, if you have an answer, I'll accept it.
I don't have an answer, but I'm glad you asked the question. I wish you asked it a month ago, just because I'm gonna be wrong on the dates. I'm gonna say it was probably two months ago, we were told about the irrigation system is broken by a contractor, which...
March.
Okay, which we were never told about. So we're going after the contractor to fix the irrigation system, but we also, within a week, the next council meeting... a week, the next council meeting, approved a contract to a contractor to put in the new irrigation system. Now, if you can find out tomorrow, if it hasn't been done in a responsible timeframe, then go to the second bidder and give them the contract because this is ridiculous. Two months and, you know, we don't need it in the winter time. We need it now. So, Tom, I don't have an answer for you, except I apologize.
That's a good answer.
Something like this should not happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mike Sedano, Fourth Avenue. I just have a question. Where does common sense come into play in development and in designing development and approving development? Because to propose to put 130 units in a neighborhood that doesn't even have enough parking for all the residents that are going to be there? Now, I know you can have numbers, a Mr. Transportation guy, you're going to have numbers that say you only have to provide, you know, 1.2 spaces for cars. Well, this is 2024, okay? Your building is going up in 2026, maybe? I don't know any resident that doesn't have at least two cars in Asbury Park. Where are the second car gonna park? They're going to park all over the neighborhood. If you're going to put a development in, you should at least put in enough space for the cars that are going to show up in the development. And I don't know why we need 130 units. I mean, I don't know what your financial scenario is, but what makes us need 130 units that will generate cars on the streets of Asbury Park fighting with spaces for residents that already exist here? That's number one. Number two, have you ever tried to cross Langford getting to Fourth, Third, or Fifth? You talk about sightlines, you can't even cross the street unless you get midway into the street. So if you're having cars enter and exit Fourth Avenue, what are the sightlines going to look like to enter Fourth Avenue and exit Fourth Avenue? I try and do it every day. It's nearly impossible and you have to come past the parked cars in order to see a car or a truck zooming down Fourth Avenue. So I don't understand where, I mean, I understand numbers, I don't understand common sense. So I wish common sense would go into the approval and the development proposed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Kitty Minervini, 1012 Fifth Avenue. I'd just like to piggyback off of Mike and Nancy. If my memory serves me correct, and I think I brought this up before, the original, original plan was 100, just over 100 units, 108. And the council asked the developer to include affordable housing. I don't, I still don't understand to this day, and I've spoken to John and Amy about this, you know, on email, I don't understand why to this day, the 20% couldn't come off of the 108. And why did the developer have to add it on? So we went from 108 to 130. I don't understand that. So that is what I originally remember. Also, to that point, we had a Zoom call back when we had Zoom meetings and the director of zoning basically said it's not worth the developer's money. He's not going to make enough money. I want to remind you all, you are advocating for us, not the developers. You guys are advocating for us. I don't, I don't understand that. I don't even understand how those words came out of her mouth back in the '21 or 2020, whenever that meeting was. And in addition to that, I'm still not clear if this is a pilot and for how long it is and why are we still doing pilot programs? Clearly, it's a desirable place to live. We're literally selling, we have a Realtor here tonight, there's, we're literally selling, we're selling homes on Fifth Avenue for over a million dollars that don't even come with a parking spot. Think about that. I don't understand why we have to lure anyone here to build a project like that. So I am very unclear about how the pilot works, why there is a pilot, and if this is a pilot, how long is it for? Because we also, and some of you were there, we also had that meeting with the homeowners' association where everyone is up in arms about the Board of Ed and our taxes and yada yada. I mean, we can go on all night about this stuff. It's all connected. So those are my two statements I'd like to make. Thank you.
Thank you. We can continue to talk offline and the pilots, I'm not saying this pilot.
I want to talk about it offline. We all talk about different things and it's not clear.
Okay.
Sorry.
You walked away, so I couldn't answer your question. I'll try to answer part of your question. Pilots do not hurt funding to the Board of Education.
What?
Look at the S-2 formula. Say the city's assessed for $2 billion and we have $500 million worth of pilots. That $500 million, if it was on top of the two, now the city would be assessed for $2.5 billion and we would get less state aid. That's factual. You can talk to the governor's office, you can talk to the financial people in Monmouth County, the state financial people. So the pilots do not penalize us in pilots, in the school taxes. And with a pilot, say a conventional tax would be 45% Board of Education, 40% city, 15% county. With a pilot, the city gets 95% and the county gets 5%. The one who's really taking the short end of the stick is the county. Instead of getting 15%, they're getting 5%. Now, the city's getting the 95% and we have to pay the Board of Education bill if it's 10 million, 50 million, 100 million by state law. So if we have 95 million, 95% to pay it instead of, you know, 85%, we're 10% ahead. Again, it's a long debate and it's very complicated and the whole problem is S-2 is a travesty. And some people say it's the best thing since Coca-Cola. And you can't get the formula, S-2, where you get the formula to Coca-Cola sooner. So hopefully that's going to be changed soon with this new legislation set, it's coming up. But until S-2 is changed, we're under the gun because of the Board of Education increases. That's pilots and a short run. If anybody wants to call me and talk about it more, please be afraid. But I'll go on to Rita.
All right. Last two people said half of what I was going to say.
Okay, sit down.
No, but I want to know how this all started. This is a commercial zone. The planner decided that this should be a residential zone. You know it's supposed to be a commercial zone. That building has got me so many exceptions, changing this, changing that. I mean, Memorial Drive is not that wide and that building's going to sit on the sidewalk and block Fifth Avenue and Sunset, all those stores. Is that the right thing to do? I mean, that building shouldn't even be there. I'm sorry. I was there at the Zoom meeting. I heard the planner. She's the one that decided that that should become a commercial zone and you went along with it. That's not fair. That is a commercial zone and that's what we need in town. We need more commercial. We don't need more residential. We need commercial to bring in some money. That's what we need. No pilot programs. And don't say they are not taking anything. We're paying, we're going to be paying 50% of our tax bill. And now our land is worth more than our houses. They changed it around. It's a game that everybody plays with taxes and we understand it. And it's part of living here, which I don't plan on moving. But I'm just saying, you should, that should be a commercial zone. Why is that developer putting 130 units, blocking the fresh air besides? I thought we had an open-air fund or something. When Bradley built this town, he built it a certain way, wide streets so you could get the ocean air. Well, I think you're starting to block it up, even where my property was. And mental main isn't a fair thing neither. People should be fighting these things because they're unfair to business owners, they're unfair to the homeowner, especially those like me that has a one-family house. Everybody else that's got two-family, three-family, four-family, that's different, that's a business. But for those of us that live in one-family house, we're getting squeezed and like Felicia said, they're making everybody move out of town that's lived here all their lives. It's not fair. It really isn't fair. And about the police, why don't we have a police blotter? What happened to that? Nobody can understand why we don't see the police blotter every week. We would know about these things. We're sitting here like a bunch of dopes. We don't know what's going on in the police department. And the police chief should be here, too. That's the way it used to be. I think the old way is the best way. And it's, I mean.
Okay, Rita, your time's up.
Okay, my time is up. But that building shouldn't even be there.
I'm just going to respond briefly and they're all going to kick me under the table. The meeting you're talking about was January 24th, 2022. And the planner does not make decisions. Planner makes recommendations. So planner does not make decisions. He or she makes recommendations. When it was first proposed, the building was out to block all the site views and all the air views. And then because of citizens' complaints, the building was moved in so it's in line on Fifth and in line with Fourth with all the porches up and down the street. So that part has been taken care of. So thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony Frieda. I live at 1311 Langford Street. Been living in town over 10 years. One thing I just wanted to bring to light was in living in that zone or that section of neighborhood, bringing all these units, parking being an issue, you also have to consider the high school where the teachers park first on the residential street on Langford to 1300. That clogs it up. Now you're going to push all this other parking back into the neighborhood also. And if the school has an event, forget about it. Friday nights or during any type of event that they have, there's no parking at all. Monday through Friday, when school's in session during the day, you can't move your car. It's impossible. The other thing I think about just listening to this is also the alternate side of the street parking that has to happen on certain days of a week where you can't park on one side of the street. So everything gets jammed up. But I just wanted to mention that. Keep it brief. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And you're right, Fourth Avenue does have alternate side streets parking, so does Langford.
Kathleen Emmerich, I live at 1115 Fourth Avenue.
I'm sorry, you put your name?
Kathleen Emmerich, 1115 Fourth Avenue. My husband and I have lived here since 2005 and we own a home on Fourth. I don't know who you are, but you are hysterical, Rita. I really enjoyed you. So I just wanted to say that, I'm pleading with you, please do not put the entrance on Fourth Avenue. It is a huge thoroughfare. Amy, I've sent you text messages regarding the traffic, the volume, the speeding. We are overpopulated. Our quality of life is in the toilet. I can't even sit out on my deck, I have to close the porch. Please do not do it. Please advocate for us. And I appreciate my fellow neighbors and community members, you know, taking the time to speak up. So thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All but this patient portion is now closed. We are now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Staying.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ryan, the chambers, please. We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2024-264 through 2024-276 and 2024-293 through 2024-311. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-277, resolution authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with John Hayes to serve as the deputy city manager. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore?
Did she do that on purpose? I won't be kidding. Yes, yes.
Resolution 2024-278, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-279, resolution authorizing the purchase of admission and group packages needed for the 2024 summer day camp program and 2024 police athletic lead summer camp in an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. Resolution 2024-280, resolution authorizing payment for emergency door lock repairs needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
I guess we need to wait for Amy or just keep going?
Just keep going.
Okay. Resolution 2024-281, resolution authorizing the annual renewal of gunfire technology with sound thinking.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-282, resolution amending resolution number 2024-249, authorizing the purchase of influent pump parts needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn, we're voting on the purchase of influent pump parts needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-283, resolution authorizing professional services contract with TMM Associates for NJDEP Stormwater System Digital Mapping. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-284, resolution authorizing an agreement between the county of Monmouth and the city of Asbury Park concerning a traffic signal with emergency preemption at the intersection of County Route 16, Asbury Avenue and Ridge Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-285, resolution approving change order number three for 2023 pavement sidewalk improvements projects, Second and Third Avenue, between Grand Ave. and Hex Street.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-286, resolution awarding bid for school bus transportation services for the recreation and police athletic league programs.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-287, resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to apply for a grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund Public Entity Program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for 6163 Ridge Avenue, Block 901, lots five and six.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-288, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to apply for a brownfield development area grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund Public Entity Program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for 6163 Ridge Avenue cleanup in the amount up to three thousand, I'm sorry, $331,810.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-289, resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to apply for a brownfield development area grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund Public Entity Program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for various Springwood Avenue sites in the amount up to $990,886.67.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-291, resolution of support from the city of Asbury Park encouraging New Jersey to restore the state match to federal water infrastructure funding administered by the New Jersey Water Bank.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-292, resolution amending resolution number 2024-261 concerning the reappointment of Michael Del Ray as municipal tax assessor of the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction. I have ordinance 2024-21, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section thirty dash forty-five entitled submission of applications for development of Article Four, application for development in section thirty dash sixty entitled signs of Article Five Development Standards of Chapter Thirty, Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of June twenty-six, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.